Hi, I'm Rachel Miller. I'm the president of the Providence City Council. Just giving you a quick preview of what's ahead in the next few weeks. There's many ways to connect with the City Council. On the council docket this week, we will have a resolution in support of the Percentage of Income Payment Plan. So that's statewide legislation that is being proposed again this year that allows people to, folks who are especially struggling with paying utility bills, allows them to get into a payment plan that would be based on their income.
Hello? Okay. Great. Thank you, Chair Anthony, and thank you to the members of the Finance Committee and other councillors for having us here tonight. And I want to commend the committee for arranging for two public hearings on the budget. Thank you. I know it's been a tremendous amount of work. I want to acknowledge also all the hard work that's been done so far by this committee and our departments as they've presented their budgets and say how much I appreciate your respect for the men and women who work for the city that have come before you so far. So given that I've been before you previously, I'm going to try to be brief. I just wanted to take a moment in this hearing to emphasize a few key important points about the budget that's before you. As you know, the total budget is nearly $586 million, which is just about a 3% increase over last year. Given the increases to goods and services that we're all familiar with, this is truly a modest proposal that we believe puts us on the path to being the best-run city in America. Our goal with this budget is to rebalance our tax structure and move away from reliance on federal funding. Given the increasing likelihood of a recession, it's critical that we build a budget with a strong foundation to get us through the next few years. We have been plugging a deficit with federal dollars, and that can't continue. I'll go into a little more detail on our revenue and expense proposals, but some of the key components that will be important for everyone to keep in mind are that the budget includes more than $37 million from the state for pilot payments and a placeholder of $7.1 million for local pilot payments, which is an estimate as we continue our negotiations with institutions of higher education. This is the same amount that was estimated and received for fiscal year '23. It also includes $11 million in ARPA revenue recovery. This is a reduction from last year where $16.5 million was used. This is the last time we have these funds available. I also want to remind us that 95% of the budget is occupied by what I would describe as fixed costs. This includes $130 million to schools, contractual salary increases for our 1033 members, fire department, and a placeholder for a 1% increase for the pending police negotiations. Additionally, we have a nearly $105 million pension payment, of which $86 million is the city's share, and this continues to grow each year by 5%. So to summarize, we aren't just plugging an $11 million deficit. Without one-time federal funds, this deficit will grow to $27 million next year. If you then factor in pension payments and contractual obligations, we're looking at more than $30 million structural deficit with no increase in service to our residents. We simply cannot cut our way out of that. This is why the budget adjusts our tax rate to better prepare us for what may come and keep Providence competitive with other communities. As it relates to the tax rate changes, we're proposing a 90 cent increase for the residential tax rate, a reminder we have not raised residential taxes since fiscal year '13. As the rate stands right now, when we include the homestead exemption, Providence has the eighth lowest tax rate in the state. A tax rate this low ensures we're not able to meet the needs of our residents in any core services. It also makes it difficult to meet the needs of our time, like housing, behavioral health, and the education challenges our city faces. The proposed change moves us to the 11th lowest, still in the bottom third for cities and towns in our state. In the same way, we looked at our competitiveness as it relates to the commercial tax, and we saw that this is a place that we are not at all competitive. For this reason, we're proposing a $1.30 decrease, bringing us to $34.10 per $1,000. This is still the highest commercial tax rate in the state, with the next lowest being West Warwick at only $31 per $1,000. Some say we have one of the highest rates in the country. At this rate, it makes Providence less competitive when bringing in new business. We also know that commercial spaces across our city are vacant, and if they want, if we want to spur economic growth, we need to make ourselves more attractive to commercial business owners. Our average retail vacancy rate is nearly 12%, and our office vacancy rate is 18.5%. The city will not prosper without commercial businesses in these spaces. You'll hear from small businesses and landlords across the city about how our high tax rates are impeding their growth and ability to build their workforce. This change will help to make Providence more economically competitive moving forward. So despite all these challenges, we have proposed some targeted increases in response to what we've heard from constituents and you all since taking office. Better services so that when they report a problem, they know, you know it'll be reliably fixed, and this includes increased staffing to work on sidewalks, graffiti, and to keep our neighborhoods clean. Targeted investments for after-school supports, recreation and youth employment, and public safety investments to ensure we have the necessary pipeline of firefighters and police officers to meet appropriate response targets and achieve appropriate levels of service. Finally, there are modest investments to better coordinate our housing programs to be sure we're positioned to work more collaboratively. Lastly, as I know you are all aware, but I want to reiterate that as we propose this budget, we are also pursuing multiple ways to sustainably expand our revenue base so there's less burden on our taxpayers. We're at the table with our tax-exempt institutions, working on new pilot agreements that will impact city finances for the next 20 years. We're pursuing legislation that brings in new taxes from commercial properties that nonprofits use for for-profit operations, and we're asking the state to provide a portion of payroll taxes when our meds and eds grow so that they can be reinvested in city services. As an administration, we are doing everything we can to put Providence on sound financial ground while we advance our vision for making Providence the world-class city we know it can be. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I look forward to hearing the public testimony.
Thank you so much, Chief Operating Officer Courtney Hawkins. And so now we're going to begin to take testimony. It's, it's, we don't have opposed or supporting. We just are going to hear what you would like to tell us about the taxes, the proposed taxes, and also the proposed budget. So I'm going to ask the constable if he would be so kind as to bring me the sign-in list. Has everyone had an opportunity to sign in that wants to speak? Okay, great. If I could have the sheets, thank you. And also, I'd like to recognize councillor Shelley Peterson, who just joined us. Thank you so much for coming. I'd also ask if everyone could keep your remarks rather short. We have a lot of people that want to testify. I'm hoping that everyone can do so within maybe three minutes, four minutes. So I do appreciate you coming, and let me start with David Schaefer. If you wouldn't mind giving your address, and go ahead and use the mic so that people can hear you.
I have to take the microphone.
Oh, I don't think it's on.
Hello?
There you go. So if you could just give your name and address for the record.
My name is David Schaefer. I live on Soggin Avenue in Providence. I'm in favor of the tax change that the mayor has proposed. So I'm in the real estate business, and we specialize, my company specializes in apartment rentals. So my, my thought is this, have you asked yourself the question, how is it possible that the population is staying the same and there's a proliferation of apartment buildings and construction in Providence that there's a housing shortage? It doesn't make sense. So the answer to this is that when COVID came along, the household formation numbers skyrocketed, and that's the number of new households that were formed. Those households were formed mostly by people from 25 to 40 years old who left their parents' house, who split up, and who took up additional apartment inventory, and that's where the big squeeze came from. In addition to that, people were getting home offices, so the number of bedrooms, people that were renting two bedrooms, were renting three bedrooms, and that's what put a squeeze on the apartments, and that's why there was an apartment shortage. It's not my opinion that this still is. So what happened at the time was that COVID came along, there was an additional surge of cash that came in, peoples were at an all-time high with regards to their pay, and unemployment was at an all-time low. Then when student loans got paused, people had a lot of extra cash, and that's what the big expansion, what caused the big expansion in housing. So after the big expansion came, there was a tight squeeze on inventory in Providence. Normally, population and inventory squeeze remain the same, so household formation increases as population increases, but the charts show that the biggest household formation stats that happened since the war happened right during the beginning of COVID. So what happened then? So, you know, I consider one of the most egregious tax increases that the city has ever had happened last year. So now, all of a sudden, inflation's, and the mayor's absolutely right. Inflation's coming along, you know, with recession. Inflation's here, recession's soon to follow. There's been, starting to be a decrease in the household formation numbers. You can look on the HUD reports, month after month now, it's shrinking. People are getting roommates, people are going back to living in mom's house, and this is what's causing inflation. So what actually happened in the last tax increase? So this is what really happened. These are true numbers. The single family, two-family, and condos, all of the units that are five and less had a total tax decrease of $752,000 last year. There was a tax increase in the commercial properties of $9,794,000. So that means of the total taxes that were, there was an increase, that means that 84% of them were levied against the commercial rates, and of that, approximately 75% of that to 80% of that was levied against apartments. The average one to five, I mean, excuse me, the average five-plus apartment building, and I'll say this clearly, the average five-plus apartment building on the last tax session had a raise of 28.65%. That's unbelievable, 28% tax increase. So now, what the mayor's doing, I give him a lot of credit because if it weren't me, you know, I'd go for a massive change. He's trying to inch it the other direction. Maybe next year, we can inch it the other direction. Those people, I live in a two-family on the east side, you know, and I was all proud. Last year, my taxes went down. The last time we had an assessment, my taxes went down again. So a lot of the people that are complaining got tax decreases in the last session. And when you add up the numbers, the total was $752,000.
Mr. Schaefer, if you can wrap up. I mean, thank you.
Yep, I'm almost done. All right. So I think the mayor has it exactly right when it comes to understanding that there has to be some relief in the commercial rate for the apartments. And I just want to say, the biggest squeeze that's happened, because the people that are 25 to 40 now are getting roommates, the five-plus units, the biggest squeeze right now is on the low-income elderly. Those are the ones that can't find apartments, and those are the ones that live in these buildings where the interest rates are going up for the owners, where the taxes have gone up 28%. These are the ones where they're getting the biggest increases. So it's my feeling that if we want to take care of our elderly and we want to see reasonable, you know, growth, but at the same time see, you know, some relief, my feeling is that we need to listen to the mayor and follow his lead on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schaefer. Next is Rachel Santos. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and your address. Thank you.
Hello?
Yep.
My name is Rachel Santos, and to the members of the Providence, my address? Oh, my apologies.
That's all right.
50 Laban Street.
Okay, thank you.
To the members of the Providence Council Financial Committee, my name is Rachel Santos, and I am here to express my strong opposition to the proposed residential tax increase in Providence. As a born and raised resident of Providence, who is the daughter of a tenant, I am also a young person who plans to go to college in September of 2024. If we are to have this potential increase in homeowners' tax, that could result in my mother's rent going up, and that could make college very unaffordable for me, and that could be the fate of many other students here in Providence as well. It is deeply unfair that young people's future is put at risk because the solution is to put the burden on marginalized communities of color here in Providence. I ask that you vote no on the tax homeowners' increase. I deserve a future, and my peers deserve a future as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Okay, we have Chandra Womack.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's actually Shonda, there's no R in that.
So sorry.
And the Cambodian pronunciation is Jindah.
And your address, if you wouldn't mind.
Yep, 11 Rosebank Ave in Providence, Ward 12. I've been a resident and homeowner of Ward 12 for 18 years. I was, I was able, my husband and I were able to purchase the home at a very young age. He was playing ball overseas. I was fortunate enough to get full-time employment after graduation. So we bought the home when I was 25, just for a go-a-wedding because we knew that as a refugee, first-generation college graduate, my husband, who is black, we knew that the way to building generational wealth was purchasing a home. Okay. The proposed budget is extremely inequitable. I would encourage the mayor and his administration to get more creative about how you fill this void.
If you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind addressing it to us. Thank you.
I would encourage the mayor and his administration to get more creative around meeting the budget void, and that creativity should be rooted in a lens of equity. I'm, I'm here to speak on behalf of my husband and I. We want to really still remain residents of Providence. I grew up on Prairie Ave. My parents, who are on social security, bought a home on Prairie Ave for $40,000 in the mid-1980s. They're both on social security disability. The only way they're able to afford their mortgage is by renting two of the units, and they have chosen to rent both units below $800 because they've chosen to rent to immigrants because they were refugees, and I know that's well below what gentrifiers are charging Providence residents. I'm not sure if you all also recognize, but the mayor's budget is asking for an increase in policing. I'm sorry, but if we've been reading the news and looking at crime rates, I believe it's been the lowest it's been in 50 years. So I'm wondering where the justification for that is. And if we look at research, the increase of policing does not equilibrate to more safety, particularly for communities of color in disenfranchised communities. I believe there's like $2 million allocated for Commissioner of Public Safety. We don't have one. So I would encourage city council members to encourage the administration to do better and to do that work through an equity lens. We want to really still remain residents of Providence. I grew up in, on Prairie Ave. My parents, who are on social security, bought a home on Prairie Ave for $40,000 in the mid-1980s. They're both on social security disability. The only way they're able to afford their mortgage is by renting two of the units. And they have chosen to rent both units below $800 because they've chosen to rent to immigrants because they were refugees. And I know that's well below what gentrifiers are charging Providence residents. I'm not sure if you all also recognize, but the mayor's budget is asking for an increase in policing. I'm sorry, but if we've been reading the news and looking at crime rates, I believe it's been the lowest it's been in 50 years. So I'm wondering where the justification for that is. And if we look at research, the increase of policing does not equilibrate to more safety, particularly for communities of color and disenfranchised communities. I believe there's like $2 million allocated for Commissioner of Public Safety. We don't have one. So I would encourage city council members to encourage the administration to do better and to do that work through an equity lens.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Ramona, Ramona Santos.
Afternoon. My name is Ramona Santos Torres. I live in 511 Street. I am a resident of Ward 15. I am here as a tenant, someone who, you know, rents a house. I just want to say that I am here in strong opposition of the mayor's proposal. And I'm going to say a few things about that. This tax increase will disproportionately harm low and median-income people and families, obviously, communities of color and other marginalized groups. There is so much data that I, that we could give you why this is a bad idea. Soaring food prices, housing crisis, inflation. But in 2020, about three years ago, a study was published by the Initiative of a Competitive Inner City. That was like three years ago, before the pandemic. They found that 88% of Providence residents who live below the poverty level live in under-resourced communities. Do we think that that, that founding was resolved magically from three years ago in the middle of a global pandemic? I think we can say that it got worse, right? Our communities already face so many challenges. Housing again, food, education, healthcare, mental health. This tax increase that for people like me will result in possible rent increases will make Providence, the city that I've lived for 19 years since I came from the Dominican Republic, unaffordable. Why do I have to leave the city that I, that's all I ever know since I came to this country? That is not fair. That is definitely not the best city in the country, in the state, or in the world. While we recognize, we understand that we need to raise revenue, that I don't think you'll find someone who will tell you that we don't need to do that. But it cannot be at the expense of poor, medium people in this city. It cannot be on our backs. We reject that and we really ask you to do the same. This is the time where leaders really need to be innovative and bold. And unfortunately, to my personal, again, my personal disappointment, this proposal is neither innovative or bold. So I also call on you as leaders and on the mayor's administration to go back to the drawing board and engage with the community to co-create, to co-create a better budget proposal that actually create a Providence that is for all of us, for every single one of us, despite of our race, our socioeconomic status, our gender identity, that embraces every single one of us. I'm going to leave, you know, my comments to say that this budget really relies on the same strategies that have never worked for people like me and for many of the people that you will hear here today. Only works for the people who, who don't know, this budget proposal is only going to work for the people who don't know what it is to go to bed hungry or to watch your children go to bed hungry. This is only going to work for people who don't know what it is, not knowing where you're going to sleep from one day to the next. You don't have access to high-quality, world-class education. This proposal is going to work for people who have never experienced those things. So again, that is not the best city in the country. So I, I ask of you respectfully to please say no to this tax proposal. There are better solutions. There have to be better solutions. The solution is not for us to carry the burden. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Nancy. Is it Nancy, I'm sorry, Zhang? I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name.
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Zhang. And my home address is 187 Withmarsh Street in Providence. I am a child of homeowners and I am testifying to oppose the mayor's budget proposal for residential tax increase. While we recognize that there is a need to raise revenue for the city, this proposal would only cause harm to communities, particularly those that have been historically neglected and marginalized. I come from a family of mongenocide survivors. We are residents of Ward 9. We are privileged enough to be homeowners even though we rely slowly on my father's disability income and my mother's income from her low-paying company job to make ends meet. This budget proposal for residential tax increase makes it harder for us to survive. In addition, as a first-generation college student, this budget proposal creates more barriers for me to break the cycle of poverty within my family. Because of these marginalized identity markers, the odds are already stacked against me and my community as this further disencourages me to be a homeowner in Providence one day. I oppose this proposal that hinders my community from thriving. And I urge that the mayor's team to reconsider and to reevaluate and work together with the community to find equitable way for us to work together collectively on finances. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Carla. Carla Virgil or Virgil? Beheel. I'm getting some coaching. Yes, I'm getting some very good coaching up here. Thank you.
Hello, okay. Yes, Carla Virgil or Carla Beheel. Good evening, Chair.
And your address, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, yes, yes, 66 Ravenswood, Ward 5.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Anthony, the Finance Committee, and other council members. I am a Providence resident, a new homeowner. Very excited about that. I've lived in Rhode Island for almost 40 years now. I came here when I was three from El Salvador and I grew up in the west end of Providence. So buying a home in this city has meant a lot to me. I love, love Providence deeply. I also work in education and have a, lead a nonprofit where we do a lot of work around building a better education system. Unfortunately, after hearing the mayor's proposed budget, I got a little concerned. I'm like, okay, I just got a house. I'm paying this big bill. I just made it in life. And now I have a tax increase, more financial burden for me and my family. Now, the concern is not just about me, right? Most of the times, we think about ourselves. We, we approach this space in an individualistic way. The concern is really about, and the reason why it's not just about me because I know that this increase would impact my family. I've had, I would have some burden, but I could manage it. I will be okay. My concern is for my people, like my parents, who own homes, who, who got a start early on. Now they rent to people from the community. Not only do they rent to them, but they provide affordable rent to them. Folks from the community, many are people who are struggling, who are under the poverty line. I'm also concerned for family and friends that I have that may not have the means to pay that extra little modest increase on their mortgages. I'm worried about the many people who are living under the poverty threshold, working just to give all their money to rent, to support their babies, to support their families. Most of the people that I've mentioned here are, throughout history and today, the folks that carry the burden that we forget about, that we tend to just kind of put on the side because we don't really see it, we don't really feel it, hear it, and, and, and it doesn't impact us. For this reason, I am here to oppose this proposed residential tax increase in Providence. Many people have mentioned what I'm about to say. I'm not going to say it again. Well, maybe I will. It's going to impact our communities, mostly Black, Latino, Indigenous, Southeast Asian, Asian folks and low-income families. In his book Evicted, Poverty, it's called Evicted: Poverty and Profit in the American City, author and sociologist Matthew Desmond names how policies like this tax increase not only disproportionately impacts underserved communities, but it exacerbates the cycle. So we're in this constant cycle. And I did hear something that was interesting about structural deficit. Without other structural things, we've been doing this for centuries, creating policies, creating practices that create structural inequities, structural racism that continue to hurt people. And I'm here today for those people. Inequities are not accidental. This is not an accident. This is all by design because everyone here makes a decision, creates them, supports it, and has the power to enforce them. Addressing inequities requires more than acknowledgement of a vague commitment to diversity. We want to be the greatest city in the country. We, we have great diversity. Yes, that's awesome. Doesn't just mean that. It means scrutinizing these policies in place that contribute to the systemic injustices and actively work towards addressing them and changing them and being creative and being innovative. We want to be creative and innovative? Let's do that. And let's not continue to hurt the people that we've hurt for so long. My last sentence here, the road to a just in an equitable, equitable world, it's long. It's a long journey. But it begins with our choices today. So the question is, what choices will you all make? I oppose this proposed bill. I urge you to propose it. I urge you to connect with all the speakers here today. I'm sure we could come up with a better solution.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So we have Laurel Butler.
Good evening. I made the same mistake everybody else made. My bad. But hello, my name is Laurel. I'm a 20-year-old Providence resident.
Can I have your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My address is 276 Indiana Ave.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm a 20-year-old Providence resident who has lived here my whole life. I am here as well to oppose, to oppose this proposal. As a young person of color who is still recovering from the pandemic, this proposal is harmful to me and others in my position. Going to school while trying to work to pay for a place to live has been a really hard challenge for me. I've dealt with homelessness for many years and every time I feel closer to being able to accomplish getting a place to live, it seems as though there's always another obstacle. This proposal will make renters like myself and others on a fixed income have yet an even higher hurdle to jump just to have housing. As I was writing this, I was thinking about my grandma, who was a Providence homeowner. She is also on a fixed income and expresses the hardships of living paycheck to paycheck. I can only imagine the type of stress she would endure if the taxes on her home were raised. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yep, is it Yemi Bakaman? And there's another name, but I can't see it. So sorry. Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes.
It is Jamie Bacon-Moore-Lar.
Thank you. And your address?
256 Massachusetts Avenue. Okay. Greetings, everyone. Thank you so much, Chair and committee members. I reside in Washington Park, quartet. And as a committee member, I'm here to urge you to vote no to the proposed tax residential increase. I do understand and recognize, and I think that we all are in agreement, that yes, we need to bring more revenue into the city. We all know and understand that. But unlike many of my colleagues already and people before me already have mentioned, this is a harmful proposal. They will only affect, mainly will affect communities like mine. They have been historically on their south, right? So like, we know that right now, the majority of people that are living in the city of Providence cannot afford this increase. I also would like to mention that many of the residents of the city of Providence, like me and my neighbors, we already received the increase last year in the property reevaluation. So I really am asking myself the question. And I also would like to ask you the question, how can we justify another increase now? The $400, $500, they will be pretty much the average for many residents of the city of Providence, or many homeowners of the city of Providence. That can really make a difference into keeping up with utilities, into buying foods. Like, I personally, I cannot afford it. I, I don't have a wiggle room within the budgets and all the responsibilities that I have to put another $500 aside. And I work two jobs. Our communities are already facing significant economic challenges. And this is an additional financial burden. They will only exacerbate these challenges. I really, really urge you to consider the long-term effects that this proposal and it will have in our city and how it's going to be contributed into the systemic inequalities. I know that we have been in a lot of conversations and I know that we want to have a city that is thriving and that has equity in the forefront. So I don't think that this is going to be the solution. Also, let's come to the table. Let's be creative. Let's have meaningful community engagement. And when I say meaningful, it's like to really, really have that community voice and to have that empowerment from the community and see how we can work together, how we can make this happen. I know for a fact that all of us, we want to see Providence thriving. We want the best for our city. But I can tell you personally also, the, in my neighborhood, I can all see, I can also see so many residents, so many houses that have been, right now, being purchased by developers, big developers, so many people that have been pushed out. And I think that this decision will only push more and more and more people. So let's find out a positive solution where we can all work together and we can see how this can have a positive impact in our city. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Jer Lee. I'm sorry, I'm sure I mispronounced your name.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Ger.
Ger.
Yes. My name is Ger Lee and my address is 683 Public Street.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Like I said, my name is Ger Lee. I am 20 years old and I am a child of homeowners that is testifying to oppose the mayor's budget proposal for the residential tax increase. My family comes from a war-torn country and we are more than privileged to own a home. I'm writing this testimony to bring to your attention some concerns and drawbacks associated with residential taxes. One of the primary concerns regarding residential taxes is the financial burdens they impose on homeowners. Not only that, but this can place a significant strain on homeowners, particularly those with limited income or fixed budgets. The increasing property values in certain areas can lead to substantial tax hikes that may be difficult for some homeowners to afford, potentially forcing them to consider selling their homes or even relocating. Furthermore, the lack of flexibility in residential taxes can cause frustration for homeowners. Property taxes are typically set at a fixed rate without considering the individual circumstances or financial capabilities of homeowners. This lack of flexibility fails to account for the situation where homeowners may face unexpected financial hardships or changes in their ability to pay. As a result, some individuals and families may find themselves struggling to meet their tax obligation, leading to financial stress and potential consequences, such as penalties or even foreclosure. My mom, who is 57, works in a factory and provides an inconsistent source of, of income to support her family. With the increase in residential taxes, this situation is forcing her to work longer hours. In conclusion, it is crucial to acknowledge the negative consequences that they can have on homeowners and communities. The financial burden, lack of flexibility, potential market stagnation, and challenge faced by seniors are all significant concerns that must be carefully considered. With this increase, it will be difficult in the future for future people like myself to become homeowners. I urge Mayor Brett Smiley to thoroughly assess the impacts of residential taxes and explore alternative methods of funding public services that minimize the negative effects on homeowners and provide a fair and sustainable solution for all members of our community. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Okay, we have America Santos. America Santos? Okay. Mike DBAs.
It is.
It is.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the committee, thank you, members of the council, thank you for being here, and thank you for giving me a chance to say a few words. I have a few slides and a presentation with your permission if I could distribute them and also put them into the record. My address is 200 Exchange Street in Providence. I'm here as the president/CEO of the Rhode Island Public Expenditure Council.
Thank you. We'd love to take your handouts. Thank you.
So I'm not here pro or con on the mayor's tax plan or the spending plan. I just, I wanted to just give some context to the tax policy decisions before you. So as the presentation is being handed out, we have been, at Ripec, the organization that I lead, very interested in municipal finance. We've done four reports. January of last year, we did a report called Property Taxes: System Out of Balance. All of our reports are available online, and that report from January talked about the serious issues with Rhode Island's property tax system, and the city of Providence is arguably the most unbalanced of any city or town in the state. Just on the second page, I'll try to go through these quickly. I know you have a lot of people who want to speak, but slide two, the fundamental issue in Providence is that you have a relatively low tax base. So this is a calculation that Ripec has done. It's from FY 2019, which is the most recent data. It's a measure called Gross Assessed Property Value. So this is all the property that you can tax, leaving aside motor vehicle, and disregarding the exemption for homeowners. So if you have a $500,000 home, the entire $500,000 is available for this measure. As you can see, and then it's divided by the number of residents, Providence's at 65,000 in 2019 was roughly half the Rhode Island average. And you'll see some of the other communities. This is the lowest five and the highest five. So I just give this to you so you know that you're already in a constrained environment in terms of how much property you actually have to tax. The next slide I have is the property tax burden for real estate with $500,000 assessed. And you know, what this shows is the multiple. So, and this is FY 23, so this is not the mayor's proposal, this is the current situation. So a resident homeowner with $500,000 would pay a little under $5,000 in taxes. A non-resident would pay a little under $9,000, and if that assessed value was under the commercial, it would be $17,700, which is a multiple of three times. So, I mean, this kind of captures the differential in how the tax rates work. And first, you know, what I wanted to say as the first principle of property taxes is to pay in proportion to the value of your property. And obviously, this is not the case here. So you have a basic question of fundamental fairness. Homeowners, obviously, are heavily favored. Those include landlords who live in rental properties up to five units. Most disfavored are people who fall into the commercial tax rate, which are businesses, large and small, as well as landlords of six or more units. Renters ultimately pay, at least economists tell us, pay property taxes levied on landlords. Renters generally have lower income than homeowners. Providence is a majority renter community. It's one of the few communities in Rhode Island that has over 50% of their units rented. I would, you know, I think you know this, but many Providence landlords are not wealthy, and many Providence businesses are not wealthy. The high commercial rate affects affordable housing and business development by making those activities less profitable and discouraging investment. It also leads to a greater reliance on TSA's tax stabilization agreements, which by our measure have quadrupled in the last 10 years, which creates a two-track system where those who can get TSA's pay less, and the existing businesses get left behind paying the higher rates. I'm going to try to go quickly through the remaining slides. Slide four has, this is a basic chart we put together on, this just shows the multiples, the ratios between non-resident, resident, commercial, and resident. As you can see, the FY 23 budget was resulted in a much more unbalanced tax system. So just to give you one example, the ratio of commercial tax rates to residential homeowner tax rates went from 2.3x to 3.3x last year. The mayor's proposal reverses some of that, but actually does not bring Providence back to where it was in FY 22 with respect to balance. The next slide is a hypothetical business. We use this measure of 1 million in real estate, 200,000 in tangible property. And as you can see, that business in Providence would pay $35,400. The median, not the average, the median Rhode Island would be about $20,000. You can see that, you know, there's communities where pay much less. So Providence is significantly higher than the next highest, West Warwick, at $30,000. And then the next slide has, for resident homeowners, you can see that with a $400,000 real estate, which at one time was the average, which I don't think is the average anymore, in Providence, $4272 would be the tax bill. The median Rhode Island is $6324. Providence falls in number nine, ninth lowest. And all of those communities, except for Woonsocket, are second-home communities with very high tax property wealth. So they are in a completely different fiscal situation than Providence. The next slide shows the non-resident homeowner. Providence is middling, 17th, slightly higher than the median. We're just showing the high five and the high low. And then you often hear this idea that about our, you know, do we have the highest commercial rates, the third highest? So according to the Lincoln Land Institute, this is 2021 data, we're third highest among, they survey the 50 largest cities across the country, plus, for some reason, Washington D.C., Aurora, Illinois, and Buffalo. I don't know why, but, so Providence is third highest behind Detroit and Chicago. My last slide here just shows how the net assessed value, now this takes account of the homeowner exemption, and you can see that you've had very slow growth of both the net assessed value versus statewide and the property tax levy. Although the statewide tax levy has even been lower than Providence. So just some final comments, Madam Chair, members of the committee and the council. City has not been increasing school aid, so you need to think about that in the context of your budget. 22% of your budget is school aid. It's essentially been frozen for many years. You have a low property tax base per capita. You need to grow that base. The very high commercial rate is an impediment to growing the base because it discourages business development and discourages multi-unit housing development. As a city with significant financial challenges and a high level of services, there's a serious question about the decision to lightly tax homeowners. I'm a homeowner. I got a significant tax break last year. Providence is heavily dependent on the rest of the taxpayers in the state of Rhode Island to fund its services, particularly schools. Ripec fights for more education aid for Providence. We think it's the right thing to do. That argument becomes, that you become less sympathetic to that argument if your homeowners pay less taxes than the average taxpayer in Rhode Island. So I think I would ask that you just address some of these imbalances. I'm happy to take questions, happy to work with the council. Obviously, I'm very passionate about this issue. I think it really has, you know, has a lot to do with the city's future prosperity. Last thing, I know you have hard decisions to make. It's very easy for me to give comments. You all face the taxpayers, your elected officials. These are hard decisions, so I have some humility when I talk about these things. Thank you.
I so appreciate this presentation, Mr. DBAs. I do have a question. If people want to access these slides, is there any way they'd be available on your website, Ripec?
We don't, but it's in the record, so if you want to post it as part of, I don't know if there's a way to post it as part of this hearing.
Yes, we can do that. Okay.
Happy to do that.
All right. Thank you so much for this. It's very helpful. Okay, now I have Janelle Codiani.
It is. Hi.
Hi.
I live at 73 Chapin Ave, where I own a multifamily home there in the West End. I live there with my 15-year-old daughter. I'm here to oppose the tax proposal that advantages commercial property owners and non-resident landlords at the expense of residential homeowners and renters, especially those from low-income and marginalized communities. I'm troubled that landlords of non-owner-occupied properties will pay fewer taxes, given the difficulty Providence renters have had with absentee landlords. The idea that they would pass these savings along to renters is laughable at best. I understand the economic impact of providing tax incentives so developers will build desperately needed income and housing, but the result is a divestment in our neighborhoods. This proposal de-incentivizes relationship-building, personal responsibility to our neighbors, and homogenizes our communities. Why are we helping developers and commercial landlords instead of empowering residents to buy, live in, and participate in our city's growth? I'm not a corporation. I'm a single mother stewarding a home in a neighborhood I'm invested in and committed to. My rents are based on what I need, not what the market will allow. I calculate the hourly wage required so I can make sure I'm not helping to create a community where there aren't any teachers, food service workers, store clerks, or other folks earning Rhode Island's abysmal minimum wage. Why should I and the others tonight who have spoken to this love for our communities and the investment in our future pay more than a commercial enterprise whose CEOs may have never set eyes on their tenants or know anything about their lives? The mayor says that this is the responsible way to prepare for expiring federal funding and a likely recession. With these very real issues coming our way, how are we protected? By concentrating housing, a valuable resource, and a non-negotiable human need in the hands of those with little connection to our neighbors and even less incentive to treat them like human beings? That's not responsible. It's not innovative or brave. It doesn't create security or encourage personal accountability to our communities. It certainly doesn't acknowledge the burden to renters, and incredibly, the proposal doesn't even prioritize living here. I hope you will vote no and seek a budget solution that centers and prioritizes residents and not corporations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have Michelle Ziebrowski. Michelle Ziebrowski. Can you, just maybe if you speak a little louder there, or hold it right up there to your mouth.
Dear city council members, thank you for listening to the public. I don't quite know how.
Can I just ask you your address?
33 Boston Street.
Thank you.
Ward 15.
Thank you.
I don't quite know how to phrase this out due to the overwhelming outreach from constituents in my area and all over Providence within the just few hours. I've been unable to go door-to-door with everyone due to an injury over the past week, so I've been continuously getting news feeds, texts, and everything. We ask that you reject the increase on the homeowner's tax and not too low with the homestead exemption. Personally, my family owns a house and has been owned since 1956. We have had five generations total so far, hopefully someday more. I know many legislators are trying to fix the issue on the nonprofit situation. When it comes to Providence, I believe it's approximately 50% of Providence that is not for profit. Our biggest example, going back to when, our biggest example is being Rise and Sun Mills. How long will the city protect them and others like them? One of our previous city council presidents was the one who said, "Don't let it go black. Don't let it shut down." I believe they've gotten away with that way too much, and I wish that our city would do that for the people. This problem is so diverse, with many age, many middle-aged people, young, elderly, disabled. I sit on a few boards within the city of Providence, worked on several campaigns, Rack member for a few nonprofits. I literally walk the streets for all sorts of reasons, on top of the love of being involved in my community. I speak to everyone who owns houses, rent houses. I've even heard some horrible stories that people are being evicted just because they don't get their, the rent that is higher than, like, it was like $900, and now they want $1,500. These are people with children who are getting evicted. Ever since COVID, all you hear is about the finances, especially when it comes to the fixed income. You also have the issues with the unemployment and the TDI, which takes weeks, Social Security, which is a fixed income. People want to say, "Oh, people got a cholera, and it was a big increase." It was not a big increase when you have all this inflation. Gas is up, utilities are up, you know, anything for your car. If you run into an emergency, it's a big problem. Lowering the homestead, I think, is actually a slap in the face to the people because I know many who, 30, 40, 50 years or more, just trying to survive. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next is, I think it's either Marlene or Marvin. Mulaney?
Swatso.
Swatso.
Hello?
Hello?
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marleni, and I'm a Providence native, and I live on 28 Anthony Avenue in Providence, Rhode Island, and I am a tenant. I'm here today to oppose increasing property taxes for homeowners and tenants. If this is passed, it will impact many low-income families who already struggle to get by. Right now, I currently pay $1,250 for a two-bedroom apartment, and you might think that is not bad, but for a small space, that is a stretch. To put that into perspective, I am ashamed to say, as a college graduate from Rhode Island College, that is worth two weeks of my paycheck. So I'm left with two extra paychecks to pay for utilities, groceries, personal care items, and clothes for my seven-month-growing son. Right now, an apartment of three bedroom is almost worth $2,000 to rent out. It is very difficult to move into a better area, where the farther you go away from Providence, the higher the rent is. Also, let me tell you, many of these properties are not in great conditions and infested with pests. So I ask you to please to vote no to increase, to the increase of property taxes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Linda Perry. I don't think it's on.
Okay, now we're on. I'm gonna leave it on for the next person. My name is Linda Perry. I'm a, I live at 188 Alabama Avenue in Washington Park in South Providence. I've been a resident there for over 45 years. I've seen a lot, and I've heard everything that everyone says, and I agree with everything that has been said. A lot of people are living month-to-month, and an increase will hurt them. Not everyone in the city. There are people that are working jobs and have nice houses. Even in Washington Park, $500,000 house, a line out the door with the, an open house, and it's not that great. It is a warehouse for individuals. That's all it is, and it's sad. There are people living month-to-month. An example, a woman at the daycare center, her electricity was going to be shut off. She couldn't afford the $3,000. Her son was on a nebulizer. The community jumped in to help her with that one-third that the electric company demanded to turn it back on. Multiply that times 1,000 when you're in a marginalized neighborhood, and that's what's going on. I think that, yes, property taxes need to be raised. That's a positive. That is, I think the mayor is right on, but there's, we look outside, and there's all these buildings that are tax-exempt by the universities. I'm torn because I live in a university neighborhood, and we have boarding houses that are taxed on the residential. They can afford a higher tax bill, but the woman who lives in a little house, who's on a fixed income, can't afford $500 or $600 a year. She's living alone in an overvalued house. Now, that's going to come back to bite us when we have reevaluation, because we're being evaluated, the values of the homes are being evaluated on an exploded value. It's not realistic, but it seems like it's not going anywhere but up, so we can count on that not going down. Anyway, that's my soapbox speech, but living in a neighborhood that there's a lot of different people that are in this room, and not everybody can afford the increase, I am totally against decreasing the homestead exemption, because people have paid their dues and they want that homestead exemption, and the elderly, the people that are over, I think, 60 or 55, I don't know, you know, don't take that away. Don't take that away. That's kind of not fair to the people that have paid their dues, paid their taxes, lived their lives, have a little bit of the pie, and they, they getting pushed out. And believe me, there will be foreclosures, like I see in my neighborhood already, you know? There are three foreclosures in a four-block radius near me that is probably going to be, like, swept up by an investor. So we have investors that are coming in, inflating the, the real estate value. We get, we get in trouble, trying to say it nicely. We get the short end of the stick on that, because we don't get any equity. Anyway, some people can afford it, and some people can't, and we need to look at it at an equitable lens. There's too many people that are living on the edge, and this would force them, force them out of their homes, because, you know, a lot of these landlords, some of them are nice, they keep the rent slow, they want to, you know, have, invest in the community, but there's some people that are just greedy. And believe me, there's a lot of those in my neighborhood that rent by the head and, you know, $8,000 or $9,000 a month. So they can afford it, but the average person, the mom and pop, person that is on a fixed income or have children and are experiencing inflation, they cannot afford it. Anyway, I'm gonna leave it on. Should I leave it on?
Sure. Thank you so much. Now we have Anthony Santuri.
I get to go after Linda Perry. That's great. I love Linda. My name is Anthony Santuri. I am no longer a resident here, but I was a resident for many, many years, but I'm a business owner, so my business address is 180 and 182 Pine Street. My personal address is 90 Main Street now in North Smithfield. I'm here today to focus a little more on the small business aspect, the business owner aspect. I look at this the same way I look at my own budget for a small business. There's a lot I have to take care of in the small business, a lot we have to take care of in our city overall. So I'm gonna say it right out. There's no more free money. There's no more free money for the businesses, there's no more free money for our cities and towns. That's gone. We either believe we're in a recession or one's coming. I think we're in it. One might be coming. We need to prepare for that. We understand that we have to do that now. So we want to be competitive in a business and in a city and town. You want to be competitive to draw in the people you need to invest within your city and town, or come and spend at your business. Anything we can do for the small business owner, the landlord, or the person who owns the commercial property, anything we can do to help them have some extra money to reinvest will inevitably help our city and our, our state. Now, we talk fixed costs. We all have them, right? In business, we have them too, and in our city, and we have them, and they eat up most of your money, most of your revenue. We know that. And what are these fixed costs that we have? City services that we all want. We want the city services. We demand the city services. We want recents, we want education, we want public safety, we want trash removal. Costs money, so we have to find a way to keep this stream going, just like we would do in a business during a time. Now we get to what's next, rising costs. So we all talk about in business how we have to give a livable wage, how we have to be able to give more money to the people that need it. Well, we have to do the same for our cities. We're going to have wage increases that come along, but we're also facing that pesky pension liability that we all know is still there. I look at it as a business owner, as if I had a mortgage at an adjustable rate that I mistakenly made a mistake on, and it's a runaway train, and oh my God, what am I going to do with this? Finally, I'll talk about the new costs like we talk about in business. We have to be adding to our business. We have to make it more appealing. We have to give back to our patrons, like the people, our citizens here, what they need. So when we need summer learning, and we need after-school programs, and we need more police and fire academies, public safety academies, and we need some housing support, and my God, if we could just do an imaginary jar to put some of this money in for the sidewalks, if we could just throw it in there and maybe keep some so that all of us don't have to come to all of you about our sidewalks. So I just say this today, I have to just, and thank you for this time, I have to applaud this engagement of my fellow residences, business owners, and especially the younger contingent that was here. I was not like them when I was younger, and boy, I wish I was. I know we may disagree on some of these points, but I think everyone in this room, and I know every one of you, and I know our mayor does, we care deeply about this city. We come at it from different angles, but overall, it's to lift all of us up, and we all have our idea of how it lifts us up, but I think a budget is one of the starting points, and when we can come to this budget agreement where we inflict a little ouch to someone in order to lift up everyone else and keep it strong, I think this is a great starting point. Thank you all so much for all the hard work you do. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have Shanna Curland.
Thank you, madam chairwoman and committee members and everybody who's here. My name is Shanna Curland. I live at 149 Lenox Ave. in Ward 9. La lucha sigue sigue, and those of us from Ward 9 knows what that means. Wow. So starting there, when Councilman Luna died, the little bit of pension and life insurance for all of his years of service to our city, to our people, to our community, was combined with a couple other little hustles enough to buy a house, our home on Lenox Avenue, for $34,500. This was 11 years ago. This month, we moved in, actually. So since then, as you can imagine, the value's gone up.
If you wouldn't mind addressing the front.
Sure, thank you. The value's gone up, getting close to 10 times. Thank goodness, we've been able to manage the tax, the taxes. It's been predictable. When there have been small increases, we've been able to figure out. We've known that there is a structural thing built in that values us, that says, "Yes, we want you to stay here. We think your children should grow up in the house that their father labored so hard to make possible, and so we'll keep the tax thing set up so homeowners can stay living where they live and not be forced out." I love that homeowner exemption, and now they're starting to attack it and how long till they take it away completely. We know what's on here, because this is, I mean, then you see it with around the corner from us. They're taking a historic black church. They're trying to turn it into little micro studios for $2,200 a month, 2,200. In my house, right around the corner on Lenox, I mean, I, I had eight people in my home, eight adults, actually, seven of them were adults, and I was the only wage earner trying to keep all those bills paid. It's not that if you're not an official landlord, a commercial landlord, you are still housing people. If you know anybody else in this city, you have had your couch or your guest room or whatever occupied, I'm sure, for at least some time in the last few years, because this is what's happening in our community, and yet the people around the corner from me who have more money than we'll ever see will get a significant tax deduction to rent things out at 2,200. They're not going to lower that. They're getting money, they're finding people who can pay for it, but it ain't going to be my kids. They're going to stay with me and my extra kids that I didn't give birth to until I die, probably. So what do we do about it? Well, first of all, you know, I, I really, I'm just amazed by the gentleman from, from, well, from, from Ripec who's trying to say, "Hey, you know, it shouldn't be like this. We shouldn't have a situation where commercial owners pay more." First of all, yes, we should. The idea's built on they own something more valuable, commercially valuable. It's all supposed to be about free market, duh-duh-duh, right? That's how we got in this mess with Gina and the neoliberalism, and, you know, now we're seeing how her people play it out and try to play us. We know, some of us know, a lot of us know. So, so what we have to do is figure out how to stop it. Well, first of all, let, if, you know what? We all agree, everybody agrees, you know, Brown and Rhode Island Hospital and Johnson Wales and all of them need to start paying up their fair share. So great, if the businesses are tired of when their TIFs run out, or they didn't get a big enough tax break or whatever, and they want to have to pay, they want to pay even less, then let them go after the nonprofits. Why should they go after us, the people who actually literally keep the city populated? I mean, when we have kids, we are actually, like, creating a population. We're getting us, like, you know, this is what it's supposed to be about to be a city, right? Isn't that supposed to be one of the measures? And if you only carve it up to rich folks, we're going to be transient, whatever, they're not going to raise families here. So yes, there's a greater cost for the $500,000 figure that was given. Yeah, and I so appreciate what, I think it was Ms. Perry said, "We don't, we don't own $500,000 homes even with all this inflation and never will," right? So, so first of all, keep it lined up that way. Let them go after the nonprofits. We know they have plenty of money to do whatever fight they want to do and win it. Let them all duke it out, right? That'll be interesting, but meanwhile, we can all breathe and live and raise our families, and maybe I can fix the hole in the roof in my kitchen. Little, other little piece, and then I'll close out. Just want to say, for instance, though, where the money is going, the police needing an increase in their budget, look at where they're using money they don't need to, things they're doing. Why did they need a prisoner transport van outside the public forum to select a public, new chief of police? Why did they need a K-9 unit stationed right out back here at this meeting tonight, unless they knew something was sketchy and thought people were going to get mad? Speaking of mad, I am so, and what to do about it, I just want to appreciate before I close, Councilwoman Harris, who through so many things she's done over the years, reminded me, yes, we do need all of you to be in this building, doing the things you do in this building. We understand that that is actually your role, you're good at it, or at least enough people think you're good at it, that you're here. Okay. The rest of us, though, what we have to do, what we did in the old days, what I think we have no choice but to do again, is we got to do our part, give us, you know, let's keep the communication going, let's keep our demands high, because the difference from what I hear about you all as a council, and it's such an honor to, like, there be council people I've never met, I'm just so, like, you know, impressed and honored that, is what we need to do is to be able to, to, like, create the pressure that's going to tell these folks, "No, whose city? Our city." Whose city? Our city! And that's what we just need to keep saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Diane, is it Diane Kane? Diane, or Dylan, Diane Kane?
My name is Diane Kane. I live at 61 Sutton Avenue in Providence, Federal Hill, proud member of Federal Hill. After leaving Providence and Rhode Island for 30 years, I moved back a year and a half ago, and I'm happy to be back. I formed a committee called PACT, Providence Action, hi, Providence Against Community Trash, with some local colleagues of mine who are, have been great, and I agree with everything everybody said here about tra, about rent and, 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 please don't raise the rent. Just leave it alone for a couple of more years. We're just getting on our feet. But I'm here to talk about trash. Trash devalues all of these beautiful homes here. Trash is litter, mattresses, rats, dumping. We have a very big problem with that in our city, and I am here to say I want to eat off the streets in Providence. Each department has a job. The previous administration did what it could, then COVID hit. You have inherited a very difficult job, all of you, and we appreciate you, but the system seems to be broken, antiquated, outdated. I formed PACT a year ago and have been meeting with my community and department leaders who shine a light on the issue of trash, rats, dumping, and litter, and the physical and psychological effects this issue has on all people, those who live here and those who visit. PACT's goal is to be able to eat off the streets of historic Providence. The signs say, "Welcome to historic Providence," and then this is what you see. Children, they are our future. We teach them through our actions. Our children see us. They see the condition of neighborhoods. They walk around dumped mattresses loaded with bacteria and bed bugs en route to school or the park. They navigate trash bins left on sidewalks all over town. They walk over broken glass, trash, litter, dirty sidewalks, dog poo, rat feces, which spreads a highly contagious and deadly bacteria called leptospirosis. Overflowing trash bins invite rats to feast, especially in the summer months. Not only is the trash, litter, and dumping issue an eyesore for historic Providence and historic Federal Hill with its one-of-a-kind turn-of-the-century architecture, its mansions, castles, gorgeous properties, and multifamily dwellings, and brand-new condo apartment high risers going up all over town, which lose value, and potential tenants who sense the filth and do not want to spend money on those properties. But I am here to tell you that the never-ending trash and dumping on our sidewalks and streets, empty lots and back alleys is a health crisis at this point. The Providence population in 2023 is 189,000. The Providence population in 2023 is 189,000 people and growing. We have 15 wards. Federal Hill Ward 13 is my ward. The budget, the total budget is 696,198,97 for the... I saw that on the, on, on, online. How much of that can we get for the things that we need? The gaps? We've been meeting with State Department, City Department heads and anybody we can meet with and talking to them about this issue. And we feel like there's so much to do. And I'm hoping that some of the budget covers what we're asking for. Here are suggestions, and I hope that we can address some of them. Citations. We need people to collect citations, issue citations and collect them. 1.2 million issued, only 20% collected last year. Waste Management, a private company hired by the city to collect trash and recyclables, tries to do their job, but there is no solid recycle plan that people can follow. Most bins fill with mixed trash. Some bins do not get put out on the street. They sit in an alley or a driveway loaded with trash. Once they are picked up, the items are not separated. That is that hurting or helping the environment? We need to educate and update all 189,000 people living here on a regular basis. But when we suggested mailing flyers or mailers to each address once a month, I learned that there was not enough in the budget to handle that task. It's only a couple of thousand dollars. Use drones or Google Maps to find the areas in our city that are dumped on sidewalks, parks. We need more trash receptacles along our streets. Recycled cans for recycling litter and trash. We need doggy poo bags and dispensers and attached trash receptacles. We need, when Waste Management picks up trash, they can leave a small sticker on the bulky items with numbers to call or have them picked up. We have so many wonderful suggestions. Signs, neon signs on the highway. A bottle bill will entice people to collect and recycle bottles and cans for trash. That's right. This was the reaction from this film. Hundreds of people reacted to this film. We posted it through Go Local Pro, Kate Nagel, and we posted it on Nextdoor, we posted it on Facebook. I'm here to represent these people. They all say the similar thing. I thank you so much for listening to me and for fitting me in to what seems like a real cause for alarm for raising taxes on properties. Please don't do it. And please help us clean up Providence. Thank you for everything you do. Hey!
Thank you. Okay, we have Grant Dolgarian.
Good evening. My right leg is still bothering me. I apologize. First of all, I want to thank you all for, number one, your public service. And it takes a lot to say I want to serve the entire city. And number two, I commend you for having this preliminary public hearing on the budget. Because in the past, I've been the only person to show up at the public hearing on the budget because it's been at the end of the process. And this is the beginning. So, I thank you again for that. The, I have three things. One, that needs immediate attention. One that needs short-term attention. And one that needs medium-term attention. The immediate attention is, talk about, overall, I'm trying to reduce the cost of everything to everybody. And the one that needs immediate attention is our sewer authority. It's called the Narragansett Bay Commission. They process all our sewage at the sewage treatment plant at Fields Point. 50 years ago, Congress passed the Clean Water Act. Fishable and swimmable. We all want that. I'm a lifetime environmentalist. How do you do it? Our sewage treatment plant has enough capacity to take all the sewage we'll ever send them. Providence could be a city of a quarter of a million again, like it was over World War II. No problem. It's only when it rains a lot in a short period of time, we overwhelm the system. So, what would seem to be, and we have a combined system, as we know, sewer and stormwater. And so, that's the problem. But that was the state of the art 100 years ago when all these urban areas in the United States, over hundreds of them, put in their system. So, how do we accomplish the objective of keeping the sewage out of our waterways? So, they're fishable and swimmable? Well, you would think that the simple straightforward solution would be deflect, diminish, delay, divert the amount of rainwater that gets into the sewer system, wait for the storm to pass, then you're good to go. Not Narragansett Bay Commission's solution. What's their solution? Collect all the rainwater that falls on this corner of God's green earth. Store all this rainwater. Send it all to the sewage treatment plant. Treat all this rainwater. And at what cost? They don't care. They bill us all for it. The scientists at the Center for Environmental Studies at Brown University thought that Narragansett Bay Commission's solution, which was to dig this humongous storage tunnel underground, was a waste of money. Narragansett Bay Commission did it anyway. So much for follow the science. How long was this tunnel? Three miles long, under the Providence River, leading north from the sewage treatment plant. Takes a dogleg to the west under the Roscoe-Tucket River. Three-mile-long tunnel. We did it a decade ago. How much do you think that cost? Most people guess 50, 60 million dollars. And they're low. I said, ooh, really? $100 million? Still low. $250 million to dig the stupid tunnel. I asked Narragansett Bay Commission, a couple of years after they built it, what's the percentage of sewage versus rainwater they were collecting? What do you think they said? 15% sewage, 85% rainwater. You got to love it. Why am I mentioning this now, today? Because Narragansett Bay Commission wants to build a second tunnel under the Pawtucket River, leading from the Pawtucket Sewer Treatment Plant, which is in Rumford, north only 2.2 miles, shorter tunnel. But it's been 10 years later. So, what do you figure? Most people guess, cost-wise, about the same. More? $300 million?
Mr. Dolgarian, I know you have three points, and you're running up on four minutes, so...
I understand. I understand. This is the most important.
Okay. If you could get to the point on this, though, that would be helpful.
Okay. $300 million? Half a billion dollars for the tunnel that they are in the process of digging as we speak. That's why this needs immediate attention. We need the city council to, in, in, in conjunction with the mayor, to ask the governor, because the Narragansett Bay Commission is a creation of the state, ask the governor to tell Narragansett Bay Commission to stop spending any more money on this tunnel. And first do what? A simple thing, an environmental impact statement. For the most expensive public works project in the history of the state of Rhode Island, to not do an environmental impact statement first, which looks at alternatives, compares alternatives, combinations of alternatives, is irresponsible. If we were, if all these urban areas in the United States were digging tunnels, the machinery would be here in the United States. We're importing the machinery from overseas. That needs to happen right away. Every day we delay, the money continues to be spent by the Narragansett Bay Commission. And we're talking sizable chunks of money.
Mr. Dolgarian, do you want to go on to your, quickly just touch, quickly your second and third?
Okay. It would reduce everybody's cost. Residential costs, commercial costs, government costs. I'll mention the second thing. Skip the third thing. Second thing, recycling. Salaries Management Corporation, Resource Recovery, the landfill. Every year, they pump out an eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheet showing what the recycle rates are of the 39 cities and towns in the state of Rhode Island. Guess where Providence is? We're pathetic. It is so sad. Recycling's not rocket science. This is easy. When we went to what they call single-stream recycling back a few years ago, instead of having the blue bin and the green bin, now we just pour it in one bin, they thought that that was going to increase the recycling rates because it would make it even easier for people to recycle. Did that happen? No. It is pathetic what our recycling rate is. The more we increase the recycling rate, the less the cost of our trash collection and disposal costs are. So, we need to increase the recycling rate. How do we do that? Let people know how simple it is to recycle. And so, my suggestion is that we have summertime programs for kids. We have after-school programs for kids. Let's have some kids get together, take a tour of the landfill, tour the recycling facility, learn what happens, what goes on, and then have them go out at $15 an hour, right? We're going to pay minimum wage. Have them go out into the community, knocking on doors, passing out simple little leaflets as to what's recyclable, what isn't. What happens in Providence?
Mr. Dolgarian, we're up at seven minutes.
Thirty seconds?
We really are.
Thirty seconds. What happens in Providence is when... We don't want recyclables to go in the trash bin because they're recyclable. But we don't want trash to go in the recycle bin because what happens is when that, when that happens, if it happens too much, then the entire bin gets thrown in the trash. It's called contamination. And so, even people who are recycling, if they're on a route that most people are not, then it's all lost. So, that's my suggestion and recommendation for the, you know, this, this current budget session.
Thank you.
And so, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And now, we have Cheryl Space.
Hello, everyone. I'm Cheryl Space. I live at 29 Pittman Street in Ward One. But I am here tonight on behalf of the Community Libraries of Providence, of which I'm the library director. I have a fact sheet here with some statistics that I'd like to share, if I can just hand them over. Thank you. So, I am providing each of you with a fact sheet on the impact of the community libraries. The numbers presented on our services, our circulation, our programming, all represent just the first nine months of this fiscal year 2023. And as you can see, our libraries are used. ARPA funds awarded from the city are at work in the community libraries. Funding has been used to increase open hours at the Knight Memorial, Rochambeau, and Mount Pleasant libraries. But in order to be open from 9:30 in the morning until 8 o'clock at night, Monday through Thursday, Friday afternoon, and the full day on Saturday, we had to hire new staff. These roles were strategically designed to help the community recover from the COVID pandemic and to advance resident needs. With the funds, we have hired a community support specialist who works at the Knight Memorial Library, who has helped patrons apply for housing, jobs, food, mental health support, and help parents find after-school programs for their children. We've hired a makerspace program coordinator and three program clerks to offer additional creative opportunities for adults, expanding the PVD Young Makers Program to a new audience. The programs and equipment support entrepreneurs, artists, and offer myriad opportunities for creative expression and social connection. Our bilingual community education coordinator works with our GED, our ESL and language classes. And next month, 20 people will gain their GED credential thanks to our free preparation program, which is offered in Spanish. The salaries and benefits for these positions, as well as an additional librarian at Mount Pleasant, cost us about $420,000 per year. When the ARPA funds are exhausted in June of 2024, it is crucial that this funding is replaced so that these expanded hours and the services can continue. The additional hours are indeed expanding access. The additional morning and evening hours, in addition to recovery from COVID, have brought 36% more visitors through our doors between July and December. In the three libraries with the expanded hours, library staff have offered 636 programs. This is compared to 216 in FY '22. And 9,908 people have attended these programs, which is three times fiscal year 2022, 3,175 attendees. That's just talking about the three libraries with the increased ARPA funds. We have many more programs in our other six libraries. But 23% of the programs we've offered this year have been provided by staff that are paid for with ARPA funds. Finally, these additional open hours allow us to provide relief from heat and cold as we are Providence's primary heating and cooling centers. Our libraries welcome all people through our doors, and everything is high-quality and free of charge. Our libraries are focusing on fundraising efforts in order to diversify our support. As you know, it's much easier to raise funds from exterior for programs. So, we've raised nearly $100,000 to expand our cultural and recreational programs in Spanish. And we've raised $200,000 to start an entrepreneurship center at the Knight Memorial Library that is serving primarily Black, Indigenous, and people of color, small businesses. But we need your help to keep the expanded hours. We're asking for your help in planning ahead. Please also consider that our city grant of $3,995,000 has not been increased since before 2018, when I became the director. As you all know, costs have increased in every category, from trash pickup to healthcare to the incremental salary increases we've been able to offer our staff, who I will say went over two years without seeing any type of raise. We were able to do a small amount this year. Your increase will be matched by 25% by our state grant in aid. So, everything that you give us is matched by the state. I'm asking you to consider increasing our funding $200,000 in fiscal year '24 and then another $200,000 in fiscal year '25. This will replace the ARPA funds, allow the libraries to stay open, and the staff to provide these new essential services, as well as maintain our core operations. The majority of our budget goes to salaries and keeping the library's staff. That is what the library is. If $200,000 is more than the budget can bear, which we understand, any amount will help. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So, I think our last name is Joe Cornwell.
Thank you for giving me the time here. My name's Joe Cornwell. I live at 88 Holden Street in the 12th Ward. And I'm here to make a suggestion to improve the budget summary, to make it how, make it operate a little more efficiently, transparently, and accountably. So, the revenue side of the budget seminary breaks down all of the different revenue sources. And I think the city really needs to make an attempt, not make an attempt, but break it down further. There should be a footnote there. And you can go to the back and you can see that each ward, what each ward contributes to that tax revenue. The 15 wards in Providence, each of them, which are not much bigger than a square mile, are larger than 13 cities, 13 towns in Rhode Island. There's 39 towns and cities and towns. Each one of us is larger than those 13. And we all have our own identities. Each ward does. And it's helpful for the citizenry to know what they are contributing. All the people who spoke here tonight, they know how to budget. And they know how to see those numbers and put them in place to them personally. And I think this is really important. It would really help the city to do this. Some, right, some wards are going to have, be contributing a lot, some a little. That's irrelevant. It's important that every ward knows what it's putting in so citizens know how they're contributing and what they can do to improve the city. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay. All right. With that, I think we have heard from everyone today. Oh, not quite. Yes. Would you like to speak? Brian, come right up. I guess we're going to have one last speaker. Maybe two.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Yeah, I arrived at about 4:40, 5:45, and the stuff was already up there. So, might be, it might be good just for people to understand when they come in a little late.
Can you state your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Brian Bishop. Family address is 72 Waterman Street. And it would be handy, I think, if people understood if they came in a little late where to sign up. I knew I might be able to stand up at the end and make a point of order and because I'm familiar with the process. and because I'm familiar with the process. But sometimes people come in when other people are testifying and they, they don't know where to go or what to do.
Thank you.
Might help. And it's hard enough to hear in this room. The one thing I would approve of spending money on is to get a sound system that actually works. Sometimes when people do turn around, sure, they want to wow the crowd, but it's also very difficult with the reflections of sound for people to understand what's being said to the council. And when they can see your lips or you speak to them, they can sometimes understand that a little better. And I do appreciate being here for the entire testimony to hear what other people have to say. I'm not here to hear what I have to say. I already know what it is. I do think that obviously the majority of the people, many of them, I think sincere homeowners, came because of concern about possible structural changes, small, but nonetheless structural changes to the way in which our tax rates are established. And, and of course, we have created a circumstance in which homeowners kind of buy in or somewhat dependent on a fairly extreme, what would be considered monetarily speaking, a fairly extreme discount. And that, the homestead here in Providence is one of the largest homesteads in the country. While, as Ripek testified, we also have the privilege of having a commercial rate that equates us with Chicago. And I can't think that's something, of course, we want people to be, we want people to be able to afford to own homes here, but I don't think we can really say we're running a well-functioning city when the state has to be constantly petitioned to allow us to increase the difference between the homeowners and the businesses. Regularly, our legislative delegation is asked to go to the state and create an exception for Providence because the cap on that is supposed to be 200%. But instead, our commercial rate is about 350% of the effective homeowner rate. And so I don't, I don't really think that's a question about, somebody mentioned businesses should pay more because they're worth more. That's absolutely, of course, the principle. But here, businesses pay more because the rate is three-and-a-half times as much. So I respect the mayor for realizing this is an issue. On the other hand, it's, it's not a year where tax values are changing. It's a year of high inflation. And I don't think it's really practical to expect the council to take that, to take that issue on when it structurally can create burdens to homeowners, especially those homeowners below the median who are anticipating a continuation of the historic tax structure here. And they certainly don't come to Providence and invest the time to realize that that tax structure is unusual, that it's potentially unsustainable. They come here in good faith to join in the community and we should have, we should have a credit in the tax rate that incentivizes people to own homes here. And as they point out, many of these are homes that also have apartments and they, they provide places to live. I'm totally supportive of that. And I don't think now is the time that we can significantly change it. I would say that it may be time for, on the homestead, for progressives to think about putting their money where their mouth is. And I would hardly describe myself as a progressive, but I think that historically, the homestead was capped in Providence. And I think there's very little reason to assume that the homestead should be applied, especially at the exceedingly high multiple or high discount that it is, that it should be applied to any more than the median home value in Providence. And so as we look to how do we relieve burdens on the commercial side that are excessive compared both to other Rhode Island towns and around the nation, this is something that we have to consider. And I would hardly say that the property tax, by its very nasive, by its very nature, is progressive. If your home is worth more, you pay more. But here, I think we have to recognize that this discount, this incentive to bring people in should be affected. And the other thing on the commercial side, it's absolutely true that a commercial cut has, does not directly benefit, especially a cut across the board, doesn't benefit renters. And so this is, this is a difficult concept. On the other hand, Rhode Island historically, up until 2013, or Providence historically, created a blended rate so that commercial properties of more than six units received the residential rate on the first five units. So as the units became larger, obtained more economy of scale and were considered to be more detached businesses, their rate, their rate was closer to the commercial rate. But here, where we're short of apartments and we would love everybody who has a three-family or a four-family house to consider possibly, you know, adding to that house. And in Boston, they tear them down and build six units. We're discouraging people from crossing that threshold by not addressing the blended rate that historically existed in Providence. And I think that needs to be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it so much. And is there anyone else? Okay.
Good evening. Jack O'Rourke, 30 Sunnybrook Drive North, Kingstown Business is at 480 Douglas, Ward 14. The reason why I just came in, I think Anthony pretty much said it all, but I could go ditto and leave. But I just wanted to mention that I've been a small business person in Rhode Island for 53 years. I've had different businesses. I think the last three years for small business people has been almost a nightmare. I think you people know that some places closed up, just couldn't stay in business. Other people had to cut back on their help, cut their hours back. Maybe instead of being open seven days, they're open five days. I just think that at this stage of the game for the small business people to get a small break after what they've been through, especially the last three years, is a good thing. I mean, when you think about people[1680.72]